All right, I think we've got a core, we've got five of us here. We'll go ahead and get started. Shakira Lees and pledge Mr. Abbott.
I'll show up here and say, first, Mr. Barrett.
Uh, it's from the second. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Precious Father, we want to thank you for this day, for all that you do for us. A lot of time, Lord, we just take it for granted, but this helps us to realize how great you are. Our praise is just blessed this meeting this night, that this too do business. It's good for our county, but most of all, it was best for you. Thank you, Lord, again, in praise of Jesus' name.
All right, I assume everyone's had a chance to, within the last month's meeting, any additions or corrections? Thoughts that I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that one.
Motion made by Mr. Abbott is her second.
Second?
Second by Ms. Rodman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Mead, as you can see this evening, I think he's having some surgery in the home. He'll be back next month. I'd like to get right into the taints of what we've been discussing with the subdivisions. Apparently, we're going to have one coming up here pretty soon. We need to, I think we need to tweak a little bit. And we got through, just to recap, we got through the minimum acreage requirement at the last meeting. We removed the word average and made it two acres instead of an average of two acres. And we voted on that in that past. I'd like to concentrate on this bond. And we've been using Harrison County as a template. And I think if you look, I don't have copies of it, but we have, we have kind of looked at some of the other surrounding counties. And this is a common practice, to have a bond, to see that things are done the way they should be done. And what's happened in the past, there's been some, maybe some loosely worded documentations provided by the subdivision developers that, you know, certainly wouldn't stand up in court if they're not giving the desired effect in the end that we want to see. You know, we've got some, certainly some horror stories out here where subdivision roads are in just such a bad state of disrepair. It's a, it's a problem for the mail carrier. It's a problem for the school bus drivers. And certainly a problem for the residents because they're kind of left hung out to dry. And I feel like we need to protect our residents. And it's our duty to do so. So in doing that, a, I think it's a performance bond, basically. If you look at, you still have your printout of the Harrison County ordinance that was number 5.0. Section 5 is assurance of completion of improvements. And I want to get into discussion about that, and what we, what we want, what we don't want. Our document is, is pretty vague. It talks about a, well, it really doesn't address a bond at all. So I think we'd be wise, some wishes of this board, to insert something in regards to a bond so we ensure that these things are done, not only in a timely matter, but make sure they're done at all, which hadn't been the case over the past 20, 30 years. So if you guys want to take a couple of minutes and just buzz through that and just maybe read through that one page here, then we'll enter in discussion about it and just open the floor to any comments, concerns, and your opinions on, on these things. I have a note here on, on my page where at the last meeting, I made a note that based on the recommendation of our attorney, we struck the line down here on 2 Performance Bond. That would be C. Mr. Mead suggested we strike a portion of that that stated an irrevocable letter of credit. He apparently didn't think that was necessary. Anyone recall that, President Mead? I wrote it down, so I know it's gospel.
Wasn't placed there.
No, it was not placed there.
So it's not vouchable.
You were, that's right. You were.
I did.
You were talking. So I'll get written down here, strike letter of credit. He's going to have to review whatever we decide denied anyway, so I'm sure he'll, he's kind of.
If we strike out that irrevocable letter of credit, would that not just eliminate all sections?
Would that what?
Just not to strike all of C? Then that would all include out the whole letters as well?
Yeah. If there was any ones. Obviously, we're not going to look on each paragraph, line by line, so as long as everyone doesn't have a problem with that based on the attorney's recommendation, we will just strike all paragraphs C. Basically, what he said was it wasn't really necessary to have a letter of credit. If, if you require any bond, if you're going to put up the money for a bond, you're probably not going to need a letter of credit. One of the questions that was raised, I think, at the last meeting, I'll give a notation on, on that, is a question as to whether we're going to implement, what timeline or what deadline would we implement? I'm not sure if their documents clear on that.
The timeline that was in there was in C, wasn't it?
It was in C one year. Credit? Yeah. Well, if you read the very last, if you flip over to page 27, at 5.01B, it kind of leaves an open end. Your hide, it doesn't really say a timeline. It's up to the discretion of the.
It says, I just googled performance bonds and expiration, just to see. It says performance bonds are valid to contracts, so they expire when the contract timeframe ends. So if they did a performance bond, it would be at whatever time in that performance bond it would be set up for the timeframe end. Would it just be like per project? Yeah, I don't know. But even made it, all that time, but it just seems like per.
Or the infrastructure installed, the way it's according to.
So it could be six months. It could be a year, could be a year. Kind of a project.
It's a project, different size. But while the developer's bond is there, they're paying a premium. So it's in their interest to get the bond released by the county.
Soon as possible. Yeah.
Maybe B can be on 5.01 is your timeline, yeah?
Yeah.
Whenever the county says it's complete, then it can be released.
Yeah. That's the one.
They were small.
That's the way I read it.
And the commissioners, if I'm reading this right, the commissioners, if some plantation override, whatever. Yeah, work and commissions, and they wage requirements, and that would be complete, all level approved. Two A.
Two A, yeah.
While we decided to remove 2C on 2E, we probably need to also strike out your irrevocable letter of credit in that first line and bring them accepted, and that way it's.
Yeah. Travis, could you, could you tell us where you believe this might? If we, say we just, and I'm just thinking out loud here, if we just inserted this whole section with the changes we've made, because we're only talking about one thing. We're talking about just the bond, a performance bond. That's all we're talking about. We've talked about this enough. I think everyone is in an agreement that we need some type of assurance that the subdivisions are done correctly. And unfortunately, a bond is the only way to do it. So once we have tweaked this the way we like it, and we've taken out this, and we've taken out that, do you see any issues with just inserting the whole section, which, you know, it will only be one page? And then inserting it into our, it'd be kind of an amendment. It'd be an addition over and above our current regulations because there's nothing in our regulations that say anything about a performance bond. And it could be, it could be such a thing that it could be just a short sentence without maybe spelling it out in such detail. Although at some point, somebody's going to look online and they're going to need to know exactly what they need to do to move forward with their development project. I notice, you know, in ours, it addresses everything. Ours, water supply, ingres, egress, IDA permits, what used to be rule 5. I can't, I cannot remember that. Andrew, what's that acronym, that abbreviation?
CSGP.
CSGP.
Construction Stormwater General Permit.
Never came to me for this. Used to be rule 5. Yeah, I'm sure. I think he's ignoring you. You still thinking? What are you thinking? Well, in the first place, you're really not going to need one inspecting the road. You're going to have a hand in it. But like, first and foremost, before you build the road, you got to have a drainage plan. That's going to fall on the government, the state, IDA. Then you've got the highway department who's going to make sure that specifications are met in accordance with building the road. So you would really have, you would have a large part, although you're going to be aware of it. They're kind of going to be the ones that are keeping you up to speed on what's done and what's not then. I think that's the way it's going to work.
So this document is accepted. And it pretty much says that the county's going to take the road, correct?
It, just the bond section does not say that at all.
What they built, yeah, okay. I say, okay, yeah, my bad. It wasn't making far enough down the road.
Which, well, which, which, it's all fine with the same wind, though.
Built specifications is.
It's, it's on weighing list, basically.
My best understanding is that if this bond, just this bond section were to be added, then the bond holds the developer accountable to develop what this planning commission approves in their final plat, or their final, you know, their final plat approval. And the way we have it set now, according to roads, they don't have to be brought to county standards. So if we were presented a plan that didn't include roads being brought to the county standard, but we, the planning commission approved it, the bond's not going to require it to bring it to county standards, it's going to require it to complete to the way that we approved originally.
I have a question, more for clarification. On 501B, it says the county shall not accept required improvements nor the commissioners release or reduce a performance bond until the county has submitted a certificate stating that all improvements have been satisfied and completed. When it says until the county has submitted a certificate, who is that? The commissioners are going to release it. What exactly is the county that's going to submit it? Who is that body? Is that, does this is the planning commission? Is that?
Well, I think, the way I read it, when you say the county, that would include everyone and anyone who was involved in making sure that everything was done properly, including drainage, the road, even the surveyor's office.
So it's just kind of like a letter already done, and we'll just like sign off that our part's been done and they can send it? It'll be the checklist?
I'll tell you what.
That's my question. I just, if we're going to make it exactly what everyone's supposed to do, I don't know what that means. So if we're giving it to someone to read out, they're going to know. Does he go to have that letter written up and released?
I would think the easiest way to answer that would be someone pick up, and I'd be happy to do it tomorrow, pick up the phone and ask those in Harrison County, what do you mean by a certificate stating that all improvements have been satisfied? And see how they address it.
I just, I just wonder.
Because, yeah, we have no idea what that certificate's going to look like. I assume it would be, like you said, like in the form of a checklist of some kind.
Because that's what we're going to have. And we just have to update, I guess, what would be added. But I just don't know.
Well, it's probably like, just like when someone comes into Travis's office and wants to get a permit to build a home, you know? There's a checklist. You've got to see the 911 coordinator. You've got to see the highway department. You've got to see the health department for your setting. Depending on how big it is, you might have to check with drainage, CSGC, CSGP. Here you go. You know, I'll find out for sure about that. Daniella, you're being awful quiet.
Seriously?
Well, I don't know. Could be good, could be bad. Anyone see anything else in here that?
Yeah, I have another question.
Yes.
I'm Ms. Holmson.
You what?
I'm Ms. Holmson.
You are.
Continuing on 511B.
Yeah.
The line after that says upon such certification, the county shall thereafter accept the improvements for maintenance in accordance with the established procedures.
Yep. It's pretty vague, isn't it?
Yeah, so when I read that, I assume we take everything into the road inventory, but we aren't.
Doesn't say that.
Does it mean that, right?
Doesn't say that.
Okay, I'm just asking. Does it kind of sit to there?
The last two words, established procedures, to me say the same thing as a waiting list. The last two words, established procedures, to me say the same thing as a waiting list. We've got two subdivisions now that we adopted two or three years ago, that they need paved right now, but unfortunately, they have to take their place in line. And what people don't understand sometimes is, it's not like it used to be where you, what I call the good old boy system, where you called your favorite commissioner up and you said, "Hey, old buddy, my road needs paved awful bad, can you get that done?" And sometimes it was done, sometimes it wasn't, depending on the relationship between the commissioner and his buddy. So ever since we started getting community crossings money from the state, which is a million dollars a year, which has been a blessing to us, there are strings attached. They require that we do a road assessment, and there's no one within the county that can do a road assessment, has to be done by an independent company, which we do, and it has to be submitted to the state. So, so we don't assess our roads anymore. Company does it, and they tell us which ones need paved, the working, which is sometimes good, sometimes bad. It's probably in the long run better. So like these two subdivisions we adopted a couple of years ago, one of the guys that lived in it approached me the other day and said, "Hey, you adopted my subdivision, when you gonna pay them?" Well, you just have to wait, sorry.
So instead of immediately starting, like, fix these roads, would those roads automatically become part of the road inventory? Just because they're on the road inventory doesn't mean they're gonna be maintenance, but they'll be ditched out and, or they, plowed? I mean, how are your private roads anymore?
That's right.
Public, aren't they included in their inventory, right? But they wouldn't have to be like, first on the list for maintenance?
That's right. And if they're already paved, they're not gonna be asked...
But they would still be like, picked up as like, under county...
Still be on the list, inventory list, yeah, which is, which is kinda good in a way because it allows us to, we receive additional money from the state.
For the road inventory?
More miles of road that are up on our inventory list, assuming they're not all falling apart.
That'll list, so I was wondering.
Anything else on this document? Pick us out.
This is my question to, or comment to Emily's question now. We're still not adding anything that requires roads to be built to any specification, they're gonna be private roads. So I don't know...
Yeah, we have...
I thought last month you said that we're gonna change...
Okay, that's what I'm missing.
Yeah, last month. I remember when you were somewhere along the way.
And I mentioned that to Rick, and he's still thinking about it, but the question was, currently it's a 20-foot width for us to take it over, and consensus was here that we just make it 22, because that's what we want on the new ones, and we can certainly, we can certainly change that, I just, I don't have this blessing yet. I mentioned it to him, but I have not had a lengthy discussion with him about it.
Like, emergency vehicles and stuff, so like the wire, that they would make those roads the better, since they're already moved out, getting a subdivision, so people can
There's kind of a set of rules within a set of rules, Andrew, what you're, what you're asking. It's not spelled out in 150, in our document, 153.02. It's not specifically spelled out as to what road width, but there is a document, I've got a copy of it somewhere, that was passed later after this, soon after 2011, that spells out the minimum width for the county to take over roads, 20 feet. The only thing it says in our current document is, it's kinda left up to the highway superintendent, it just simply says, highway superintendent shall review all subdivisions, blah, 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 grades, curves, public weigh widths for safety and compatibility. I mean, it's, it's really vague, so that can be, that can be fixed easily.
Where did we get last month? Reading these minutes again, the commission discussed Harrison County road standards, and then you had the discussion that you're checking into on 20 versus 22 feet.
That's what he was, me and Dr. Rick, what else?
Are we, I mean, is the plan to add this road to...
So are we just looking at a section about the bond now, and then we're gonna look at the footage width in a separate...
Yep.
So we need, we need to have a vote on basically section 500 of Harrison County?
Yep. Unless somebody's got some other questions or issues or...
It's, uh... You can shoot me down out of water now if you want, but here we go. Make a motion, we approve Harrison County, section 500. We'd like to be sure we strike Harrison County and put in Washington County.
Yes.
Strike section C.
Yes.
And in section E, strike your irrevocable letter of credit.
That's correct.
Am I missing something? That's my motion. I have that inserted in our...
Okay, any, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Kevin, second by Mr. Abbott. Is there any further discussion? Questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All right, now we can go back to 4.04, page 25, paving design. We pretty much, the consensus was at the last meeting that we liked the idea of making the minimum width 22, because I recall Debra made a comment, her being so involved her whole life with the volunteer fire department out in Posey and Howard Township, she made a good point where, you know, so many times, there's issues with, you know, you get, you got a big fire truck tanker parked alongside the road, house on fire, people can't get by, and I don't have to tell you that we do have some, some narrow roads in the county. So why would we wanna go backwards with her point, you know? Why don't we just, why don't we just stick with, go with 22 feet instead of the current 20 as a requirement? And just so happens, the economic growth partnership director, she was at her last meeting, and you were standing there, were you, Emily? She made a comment after the meeting today, she actually was talking about this, road widths, and she said in Floyd, Ford County, and Clark County, there are a lot of them that are requiring 26-foot widths.
Especially some...
That's for subdivisions, you know, that's probably the ones that are, have the big houses and things like that, which personally, I think it's a little bit overkill, but I think, personally, I think 22 feet is a good number myself.
Too few water than we have now, right?
Now, I don't have to tell you guys that, you know, we're getting trucks are bigger, semis, grain trucks, log trucks, delivery trucks.
I'm looking on page 24 here, Harrison County subdivision ordinance. On page 24, B, so I guess it's 402, 4.02 Streets B, grading improvement plan, basically says streets should be graded and approved to conform to county construction standards and specs. I know we don't have it in our subdivision code, but does the county have, have construction standards and specs for county roads, or the county highway department have it?
Yeah. It's very brief, it's very cut and dry, there's about eight items on it, requirements, it's pretty simple.
It'll be the width, the base requirement?
Base requirements, yeah.
Yeah. But we, but we do have that on...
We do, we do.
So if we were to take this section B, grading improvement plan, and maybe change a few things, because it does mention a county highway engineer, which I'm sure we have to change that, but we were to put that into our subdivision code somewhere, we would have those county construction standards and specs to back that up.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but there is a portion of 153.02 that says something very similar.
Our current 153.02, our current subdivision code that we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, it really, it does address that. It doesn't say the exact width, but it does...
It says the highway superintendent shall review all subdivisions for ingress and egress around grades, curves, and public weigh widths for safety and compatibility, and coordinate the subdivision public ways with plain inherent public ways. And it goes on to say about having all the site distances and the number of driveways and...
Yeah. What number are you reading, Emily?
153.02, section B, in our subdivision control plans, okay. These retirement shall include existing and proposed new county roads. There, there's on our, it says somewhere south of that.
We're saying we have the design then, except for the width, that will...
Well, we got the width, it's 40 feet.
Yeah, but I mean, except for if we change.
Yeah, that's the only change.
We just changed 22 feet or...
But being the...
If we've got, if we've got all...
I don't have a copy of that in front of me, so...
Okay.
The...
So we just get this up to...
We talked about the binder and...
This needs updating, I mean, this needs updating.
That's in a different, that's in a different document.
This ordinance still needs to be updated on the county website, because Travis is saying that we've made changes to it in this document that we're all reading currently, so I'd say like the 325 feet distance from each direction is actually 300 feet. So even on baseball, we still need to update this too, so if we do do all this, there's still just things that we just need to clean up from what we've already passed.
So how long has that stayed, that we've already passed? How long to bend? And where to give, you need to add, maybe put it on the website?
The checklist isn't updated.
Yeah.
It's just the wording on the first page.
I noticed something on your road width that go along with your county road standards, I've never noticed before, but they even have on there, I don't know why you do this, but dead end or cul-de-sac only 18 feet.
On ours, around there.
I don't know why, but I've never noticed that before, but... Roadways two inches is 20, and then dead end cul-de-sac 18. I'm sure we wanna get that out of there.
Sounds like we'll talk a bit more.
What, when the 18... 18 feet wide?
I'm assuming wide.
No, I think, I think that's where the confusion is, it's 18-foot radius. There says, there says 35 feet wide.
Yeah, there's 35, yeah.
Yeah, I think a 18 has to be a radius if talking about a cul-de-sac.
It has to be, you can't turn a school bus around...
It just says that it's a dead end 18 feet.
18 feet wide.
Is that what it said? Well, that's no good. Can you turn a school bus around in an 18-foot cul-de-sac?
I hear a school bus. Nope. I may not say.
Your anger at school buses, did he?
I think it's maybe meaning that the actual roadway going up to the cul-de-sac, I don't think it has anything to do with the radius, it's just 18 feet going up, or just a dead end without a cul-de-sac.
There's one that's straight.
So we just need to, need to, I don't know, just talking here, so 4.05, they're talking about this, the streets being 22 feet, six-foot shoulder, men on pavement ready, radio, or radius, whatever, intersection shall be 20 feet, road curb installed, men on pavement based with grades, everything, so why don't we just make it to sound a little better? And then with pavement cul-de-sac, I... And then on pavement cul-de-sac, I'm all, we're going to do this, let's give everybody room to work here. I've seen some stuff going in Harrison County with this type of stuff, it doesn't look good. If I was building subdivision, I probably wouldn't want all of that, but you know, it's part of life. We always get what we want.
Yeah.
We've already added in.
Back up just a second, Emily, you read this 153.02, section B?
Yes.
And that, that points out to me all these site, what I'm reading is it points out site distances, and then grades for curves, and it addresses driveway distances, but I don't see in that section where it would actually address county construction standards and specs for roadways. In fact, if you go 153.01, section I, II, our ordinance just point out if a proposed road is to be accepted by the county, it's to be brought up to current county stone and asphalt standards. Basically, it makes it, makes building our roads to county spec optional, which...
What's, were you at that 153.01, what?
I...
I, II.
In last month's meeting, we approved add Harrison County, section 4.04, pavement design into the Washington County subdivision control ordinance.
4.04?
Mm-hmm. And then the width of pavement, we talked about, but that's when Todd said we'd have to talk, we want to make sure Rick Boils is okay with our, but it just, we didn't think it was the same as what we had for our county already. With that, it was in one of the...
So we have a motion, or we voted on adding 4.04 to our section 153.01?
I don't know, they didn't say where they wanted to add it last month, that just that we were going to add in the Harrison County's pavement design into our subdivision control ordinance. I don't know if, I think we're not, we're waiting to actually totally go for it, because we had to, we wanted to have approval from Rick Boils to be sure that whatever footage we pick is okay with him, because his people in our in-laws have to care those roads, so...
But the consensus was to require all subdivisions to be paved.
I think that was, I think Lori said that, but they didn't, I think that was Lori who was calling and said it, and then Bushard, I don't know if they're on the spot, but I think that she was saying, my gravel, maybe, maybe okay. I think the last one, the only one we were talking about, that we also have our subdivision control ordinance that did say the exact requirements for our roads, it just said whatever our county roads are, and then it's in some other county ordinance that we have somewhere, what our county road qualifications are. Because I, I think we asked the same thing last time, we just want to be able to see it, and I don't know if we ever fully found that somewhere or not, and so, Rick Boils was a part of our discussion for it.
Andrew, you just, you have to remember that the 22-foot, just as an example, going from a 20-foot width to a 22-foot width does not necessarily have to be specifically spelled out in this updated document, because it, it's no different than all the requirements by you when it comes to drainage. You can't put all of that in there. So that's why when you're referring to I, II, down there, last sentence, must be approved by the county highway superintendent. He has his, currently, it's 20 feet, he has his minimum specifications that he's aware of, that he's familiar with, and it doesn't have to be spelled, that's why it's written like that.
Yeah, I, my concern with I, II, is that this is the first sentence, if a proposed road is to be accepted by the county, which to me leads it to be all of these specs that we're talking about, allows them to be optional if we leave this I, II in there, or at least not modify it from if a proposed road.
Yes, to answer your question, it's a judge, yeah. I think it's like that by design. It's up to his discretion based on other county ordinances that have been adopted or revised or...
And I'm not making a motion now, but I think that I, II should read, all proposed roads shall be brought up to current county stone and asphalt standards for roads and must be approved by the Washington, I know there's those four roads, is it? Yeah. I think I, II should read, all proposed roads shall be brought up to current county stone and asphalt standards for roads and must be approved by the county highway superintendent.
So instead of saying if, if a, you just strike that and say all?
Yeah.
And then strike it.
Is to be accepted by the county, comma, it, strike that as well.
So we, all proposed roads shall be brought up to current county stone and asphalt standards?
Yeah. Okay, you say you're not wanting to put that in form of motion, so I got to get back with Rick on the 42-foot road width, width anyway, excuse me. So I'll ask him about that, I think he'll have a problem with it.
So with the paving of all these subdivision roads, it will just become a minimum then, a mandatory minimum? And then that's the standards our, our Washington County?
Yeah, I think that's...
So it'll have to be added to the checklist? One road?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything else on, on that?
I just wanted to ask Rick Boils a lot of questions about roads. Like it's 20?
Yeah.
It's 22 and a... I think it's okay.
Okay, wait. Oh, I'll, I'll take it to more.
Right. Because now they file all the subdivisions.
We may be overstepping our bounds a little bit.
Yeah. I mean, that's just, I'm not saying they won't take them on, but if we say all subdivisions have to be added to road authority, that's saying that in every, which they go out anyway, but that's adding more time. So if we're going to add more time to the driver's routes, and we have to make sure that they're as safe as they can be, rock their drive line, and as wide as they can.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the nearest says that the county will take the road over, but then what we're saying is, do developers even build the roads to county spec?
But we can't take them.
That they...
But whether we take it over or not, the county still will clear out the subdivision for school buses, or for emergency personnel. So I mean, we might as well get the roads at least where they can fit down on the...
That's true.
So they have to get the angle.
What we, what we want to try to get away from is what's been going on the last 30...
The law, where the roads cutting off and...
Last 30 or 40 years, what's been happening is, due to us not having strict enough rules when these people come in and build these subdivisions, instead of building them where they are ready to be turned into county roads, they are putting a burden on everybody else in the county and expecting the taxpayers to foot the bill for the work that they should have done when they built the subdivision. That's what's been happening. This is what we need to get away from. Is that what you said?
Yep.
So why should somebody who lives in Hartensburg foot the bill for a subdivision going in and peaking? When the developer didn't do what he was supposed to do, there's no ditches, no culverts, maybe some gravel, four inches, so in three years, it's full of tunnels. And then people come in and wonder why their road isn't fixed. And it's happened, and it's ugly.
Shouldn't be easy to put them in here.
I agree with what you said, I just have concerns that our ordinances don't reflect that, I just want to make sure that we have our ordinances updated to where it reflects those thoughts.
Yeah. Well, I'll go back to what you do on the drainage end, there's overlapping rules, sets of rules that, that, you know, highway department has his, we just want, we do want to make sure they're consistent, yeah, but he's, he's got his set of minimum specifications, you've got yours, on the drainage end, we can't put all those things in this document, or it would be three feet thick.
Sure.
That's all I'm saying, but, yeah. As long as it's at the discretion of the highway superintendent, who has his rules, and we're aware of them, and they're documented, that's what's necessary.
So is that person coming up with the rules, or are we coming up with the rules?
What for you?
This county road superintendent. You said he has his, is it, you know, all this stuff, it sounds to me like we're leaving it up to his discretion. And I'm not picking, you know?
Well, he's, he's got them.
So he has the list.
He has a minimum road requirement, minimum standard.
Okay, so if we don't, they're going to be the same as his, or he can't take it?
That's the point. That's why we want to keep it consistent.
I think what they, I think what we said last month, and I might sneak out a term, is that just because we have the road minimum standard that the sale panel doesn't mean we'll put in new subdivision roads that we want them to just be the minimum. Not what we said last week, like if the road minimum is 18 feet, that doesn't mean, Deirdre was saying, well, that 18 feet might be the minimum, but two foot makes a difference when you're getting a fire truck on the angle. So if the minimum's 18, that's fine for all the county stuff, but just when it comes to the subdivision stuff, would it be okay if we made it bigger than that?
So we're going to make it minimum 22.
For subdivision.
It can be 24, or 6, or 8, or whatever, but that's our minimum.
I think that's kind of what we came to as a consensus last one, but we still wanted to double check with Rick, even make sure if that was okay if we did that.
Why wouldn't it be?
Just to be sure we didn't...
Curtesy.
And I'm just playing that for memory, I think, I don't worry.
You're going to check with him tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Well, if he doesn't have this in answer by next meeting, I say we make the footage and drive on.
Yeah. Anything else you guys want to tackle this evening?
Just to point out, um, six, let's see. Our, our current ordinance is 153.01, section H, formation of property owners association that is required if internal roads are not proposed to be brought up to current county road standards. So if we're going to move forward with I, II, I think section H would also need to be reworked.
Okay, looks to me like, somebody tell me if I'm wrong here, but we just need to remove the last sentence, strike it. Because from this point... Because from this point forward, all subdivision roads will be required to be brought up to county standards. Right?
You may think that the whole section H could be struck. Because the only thing that section H addresses, the formation of the, of the POA board is internal roads not being brought up to county standards.
Well, it says common grounds.
Where it's a bad sample.
Okay, okay.
There may be other issues other than the road that the address maybe? I don't think we need to discourage anybody from forming a property owners association. I'm not sure how well they work, I guess it depends on we never did understand that too much, but and then remove the subdivision.
I might be going too far with this, since we're talking on H. If we remove that last sentence, and it just says that they're required if common grounds or maintenance repairs to roads exist, do we need to clarify that maintenance repairs to roads exist if not adopted by the county? Because if they're still private roads, they're brought to county standards, but once they and once we adopt them into the county road inventory, they become public roads, so then they wouldn't be responsible for fixing them. Does that make sense?
That's what I've been confused about the whole time, is that if it gets, if the road gets added to the inventory...
Then it's a county road.
Then it's a county road, and that doesn't mean it's gonna get paid, that means will they go, does it mean it's gonna be, it's gonna be like paid?
Yeah, then it's like, and crash, or something like that, they'll still do it.
So, I feel like we're kinda talking on both sides on some of the, some of the items, and like we say in one place, they're gonna meet the county standards, but then the county standards is not twenty-two feet, so are we gonna put the twenty-two feet in this document? But then say county standards? Those are the two, that's how I, that's what I'm trying to say.
Good question.
The twen, the twenty-two feet, I would think, since we're saying that that potentially could be, would be for anything from today forward.
That's right, new subdivision.
Subdivision. The previous subdivisions, I think, you know, a lot of people, it's kinda hard to go back and say, okay, we need twenty-two feet to your road, and you gotta recut ditches, you gotta move meters and all that, we can't do that. So as far as if we, if they want to bring that road up to county standards, the county standard would be whatever I would think has been used for the last twenty years. We've almost got two standards here.
Just whatever standard it was, you know, in effect at the time of the time.
In fact, when it was done.
We can't go back and...
We can't go back and watch it, but we can go back and tell people, hey...
I think that was another question we had for Rick, if we make just subdivisions twenty-two feet, how does that gonna affect, we're not trying to change the county road, just any county road that gets put in without a subdivision be twenty-two feet?
We, we can't...
Because the county standard for roadways, we want it to be different than the county standard for subdivision roadways. That was kinda last month, we kinda counted back and forth on that.
So we'll need to put that, if we agree on twenty-two feet, in subdivisions only, we need to explicitly say twenty-two feet.
Yeah, or even in the county, whatever code Rick follows, maybe on his, we also need to say not applicable to subdivision roadways, that way it's in both places at the end. Because just like in this H, they only would need to repair the road if it was still a private road. Once it becomes a county road, that home, the property owners association doesn't need to repair the road anymore, their tax only goes to the first road, so...
Oh, but, and to correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point, we have said that the developer wants to develop a subdivision, they have to build it to county specs, pay it.
Not all subdivisions though prior, like, say last month, there were just, some of them, no, you haven't read them.
Sure.
From today forward.
Today, yeah, so those are grandfathered, then there's no, no requirements on any previous subdivisions. Anything going forward, if you build a subdivision with an internal road, it needs to be built to county specs and paid. But that doesn't, we still haven't said the county will adopt it. So...
That's not, that's not our call, it's not our decision, that's something that may or may not even happen. No, we can't, we need to...
But as long as it's maybe county standards, if it ever does get adopted, they are having changes, we've already done.
So what's the difference between being adopted and added to the inventory list?
That's the same thing.
Same thing.
So if we add the, the part about the, from Harrison Kelly, about the, let me get to it. About the, um...
The bond?
The bond, we say, it says there that...
The very last line?
The very last line.
That's what I asked, but I wasn't...
And so, and we said right then, that yes, that means it gets added to the inventory list. It doesn't mean it gets paid
Well, it's, it's, and when it's adopted, and added to the inventory list is what Todd said.
So...
And then at that point, unless, if it's added to the inventory list, then it would be added. Your final?
I took it to mean, I'm not on the right page, but that if it's meant, if we did, we sign off the performance, we do... So that release of the performance on the county shall require improvements until the county has submitted a certificate stating that all improvements have been satisfactorily completed. Upon such certification, the county shall therefore accept improvements for maintenance in accordance with established procedures. So tell me, we said then that that meant it would get added to the inventory list. When it's added to the list, that means we maintain it. Doesn't mean we pay it when it comes to, or they wanna pay it, it means that...
We thought that...
But Todd said that doesn't, I asked, my answer is that doesn't mean that will automatically be reduced to a setting in terms of the county.
Can be what?
Added to the list.
I think that's shady. Because you gotta, yeah, you gotta say how that, how that's gonna be added. I guess that's what I don't understand, is how does the person who's developing the, the,
It's a week?
Yeah, making, doing the development, how do they know when their time is over? They have, we asked them to give us a bond and to make it a certain thing, but then how do they know when we're gonna do our part? To not necessarily pay it, but to maintain, maintain it.
I think my, my interpretation was, is when all the infrastructure is in place, and I mean all infrastructure, I mean roads, ditches, culverts, water, water, all that's in place to me, then, then they can, they can, they'd like to release from their bond.
Right. That's true.
Okay, and so then, then the county doesn't get it added to their inventory list. What do we have, if we don't have the performance bond, what do we have on that to keep that up? Because they've gotten rid of their...
So you're kinda saying like we are right now?
Yeah, they're in the...
Whenever they come, when they get, they come and ask for their bond back, and everything is in, according to plan, we give the bond back, then we immediately, as a county, would take over.
That's not what we just said.
We didn't.
I don't know.
But that's probably what will happen.
Yeah.
So, I'm like... That's, that's why, you have, you have to understand attorneys wrote this. And they intentionally, for protection of both parties, so they can at some point in the future, go to court, because that's what attorneys do, is hear cases. They intentionally leave this vague for protection of both sides. That's why you see the last two words of 501B is established procedures. There's a reason that they are vague. It's to protect both parties. Now, you can, you can say, well, does that mean the county's taking over the road? I would read it that way, but you don't, because it doesn't clearly state it. But sometimes you don't wanna clearly state.
Well, if I was the developer, I would want it clearly stated.
I, I know.
And if I'm the county, I would, you know, I would...
If I was buying in this subdivision, I would wanna know if it's my responsibility to be paying to fix my road, but it's been fixed, or if the developer's gonna fix it, because I don't have an head on the county.
But I can, I can promise you one thing.
That's what I...
It, it will be adopted, and the reason I say this is, and I'll go back to the mail carrier, the school bus driver, the UPS man, the FedEx guy. If there's a subdivision that's three-fourths full, and it's paid, and it's working, whether the county has adopted it at that moment or not, it's gonna get adopted. Because the mail carrier is gonna say, why didn't you plow this? The school bus driver is gonna call the commissioners, they're gonna say, why didn't you plow this road? Why didn't you do anything about this? So even though it's not specifically stated, it's gonna happen. Because our phones will be ringing off the wall, and they'll adopt, will adopt the road. That's just how it works.
So what's the procedure for adopting roads? They just...
I think you have to know, like, I don't know for sure, but I know once it gets adopted at a meeting, and I have to add it into our road inventory book, it's like, it'll be on the GIS, someone will go drive it, give them an exact mileage, exact width of the road. You have to know all that, where it's located, and I think Rick presents it at a meeting, and this is the way you adopt it, can I say? Commissioners then vote on it.
We have to vote on it.
But Rick has to send that information to the state because they fund part of the roadways of roads, or whatever, is how I kind of pick that from where I've been.
Yep.
And then, it'll, it'll take a while, I mean, like, we would, we've done it, but it takes a while to get to state and then get back to us, which is kind of a, like a ping pong ball, I guess.
Yeah, I think it takes about three or four months or something.
Yeah, I don't ever know after that, I just know once you guys approve it, I get like the cover sheet thing, and it kinda just gives me all the specs I have to put in. I'm not gonna speak for the highway department actually, or to you, I don't, I just know what happens when it gets past that point two.
To clear up any confusion, I don't know why we wouldn't consider striking the last sentence from 501B. I don't know that it's upon such certification, the county shall therefore accept the improvements for maintenance in accordance with established procedures. I don't know whether we would just strike, strike it.
You what then?
We're in. 501B, release a performance bond in Harrison County. Leave everything there, just in section B, in the sentence, well, just one, make it one sentence, strike the second sentence, upon such certification, the county shall therefore accept the improvements for maintenance in accordance with established procedures. Because I, I agree that can be read as the county will take it over. Whereas if we strike it, it just says the county will, will release the bond, uh, and and submit a certificate stating that all improvements have been satisfactorily completed.
I'm sorry, you're, you're gonna have to help me out here, I, I don't understand why you would wanna strike it, because it is giving the people who live in the subdivision some protection, because it says, the county shall thereafter accept the improvements. Here's the key words, accept the improvements for maintenance, which means to me, if there's a pot hole, we're gonna patch it, if the road needs plowed, it basically says we're taking it over. If we accept the road for improvements for maintenance, we are accepting responsibility to maintain the road for the school buses, and the mail carrier, and emergency vehicles. That, that sentence right there alone, basically, it doesn't say it specifically, but it is leading you to believe that we are adopting the road, because it says, except the improvements for maintenance.
Uh, I agree, that's the, that's what I, the way I read it as well. So going forward, the way that this board sees it, is that a developer, to develop a road and build a road to county specs, pay the road, have a, have a performance bond in place, and once that road is built, and somebody from Travis's office, somebody from the highway department's up there and says, yes, everything is built the way they said, that bond is released.
Yep.
That road is, is not in county inventory, but it will be maintained by the county, and those new homeowners in that neighborhood do not need to chip in, to, to, do not need to chip in to fix the road, even if the road is not in county inventory, it will be maintained.
That's right. There, there's a, it's a process, and it's not, it's not gonna happen in a couple weeks of adopting a road like Emily just said. You gotta do this, 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 and this.
Right, which are the procedures.
That's right.
Right, so it says the established procedures, that's what I guess we're asking.
That's right.
Like, what is the procedure, once this is done, and the county highway department has signed off and Travis has, that, that built the performance bonds over...
This is not our...
We just have to...
This is not in our, this board's wheelhouse. It's not our concern, we, we've done our due diligence. We have stated, if we adopt this B, what the procedures are for the final step of the subdivision. The county shall ma, okay, hold on, the county submitted the certificate stating that all improvements have been satisfied complete. So basically, all this is saying is that we have signed off and passing it along to the county. We're done. And it's over, it's, it's done.
That's basically what you just said, it's up to whoever's personal, or liable for anything, whatever.
5.01...
It's how I was thinking it, I don't know if that's what it's meant to be, I should side with it.
5.01B is closure. So do, I mean, do, before we pass it, does it mean they get the county highway department's blessing that they will maintain roads that are not in their inventory?
That's why I said that was kinda like checklist or something, like, when, when they certify that it's done, that's why I just asked, like, what's, who does that?
It's not our concern?
That's what I thought you said, that's that's confusing, I mean, I, I didn't think, I mean, I see what you're saying. They're gonna ma, if the, is that right, I mean, if the road's not in the inventory, the county's still gonna maintain it?
I don't think they necessarily...
Hold on, it's just not there yet.
This is the final step of the process of putting the subdivision road on the county inventory. It doesn't specifically say that, but in a way it says it, because it says the county shall... shall thereafter accept the improvements for maintenance, in accordance with established procedures, which I read as putting it on the inventory list.
But the commissioners can't automatically say it's going on the inventory list.
That's what I was meaning, are we for sure it's going to automatically go on the inventory list, even though, I see what you're saying, they're maintaining it until this process gets done, but.
I'm just wondering, this is why I asked if I should have started off. On the, if you're on the GIS, not even go on it right now, and you can click on a road, and it will say, public, yes, no. So if I developed Emily Robin's subdivision, and I have to write it, and I've met all my stuff, and I have performance bonds, then cleared, and Danielle buys a house there, and she called the surveyor's office because the road's cracked or it's broken off, and that's not why the county hasn't fixed it, and I go on the computer, and it says it's still private. To me, that would tell me, that's why the county hasn't fixed it, it's a private road. I don't know if that's how everyone else takes it, that's how I take it. And I would say even go on county highway department, but from what I see, it's a private road. I know that they'll still plow it, I'm sure, because we have to be sure emergency vehicles can get there, so I'm sure it'll still get plowed, I just don't know if they would make, do the maintenance on it until it's added to the inventory. That's why I asked the question to start with. Like, if the side of the road breaks off, or whatever, if something crazy happens, I don't know if something, the cold weather rises up, or breaks, or what have you, I don't know, something crazy happens, is the homeowners association or property owner association, are the people that live in that subdivision supposed to fix it, or since, or does it immediately, county's going to fix it? If it hasn't been adopted, is it a road?
You talking about a brand new subdivision?
Yeah, I'm saying something crazy happens, I'm not saying it will happen, I'm just saying. Say that the performance bond gets released in November, and in that following March, something crazy happens.
Do, do what, what'd you say?
If we release the performance bond in November.
Yeah.
And then the following March, a scene phone happens, and the road isn't, there's no way to fix it, if it's not been adopted officially, is the county going to pay to fix that road? Or is the subdivision people going to pay to fix that road?
Well, if we get the paperwork that's been submitted to adopt the road.
That it hasn't hit that point yet. Because you just said it will automatically be added to the inventory, so what's it?
You can't automatically add it to the inventory until the state sprinkles holy water on it, and blesses it, and sends it back.
Mm-hmm.
Who would only know, that, that's kind of a hypothetical, you know, it could happen, I guess.
I know.
But I'd say, don't want our highway department superintendent, he's going to go out there and fix it. Because he doesn't want.
I think, I mean, that was like a real extreme case, but that's kind of what.
Sure, he didn't want anybody getting hurt.
No, I'm just saying, like.
This is all about public safety.
Funding wise, that's the question.
Huh. Well, he's probably going to pick up the phone and say, hey, we are going to go ahead and top this road, aren't we? And if it's me, I'm going to say, yeah.
I'm just saying, I think that's what Andrew didn't, you know, try, that's, that was an extreme example, but.
Same question, same question, yes.
Okay. What's the middle ground, and how it's officially on paper? Is basically what you're asking.
Yeah.
Will? The middle?
All right, if you're going to call Harrison County and ask them about who's certifying it, you can ask them if it's done, that they automatically apply the county inventory, or no.
Yeah, the certificate, I'm assuming it's a checklist, okay, so I'll find out about that, that, that should clear up everything. And if all, if all improvements have been satisfactorily completed, then someone tell me why we couldn't adopt the road. Do you know why we couldn't adopt the road?
No, it's not my.
Does anybody have any idea why we couldn't adopt the road? I don't either. When we accept the improvements for maintenance, we're adopting the road, that's the way I read it. Now, depending on what attorney you talk to, he may not read it the same way, but, I'm not a attorney. And I see as established procedures, as the hoops you have to jump through to adopt a road, those are, are established procedures. Now, there's nothing in here that says adopt a road, but I think it has to say that, because it says it in a different way. When we accept the improvements, we adopt the road. And we're getting, we're getting out, we're getting out in weeds too far. If, if you want to know the truth of the matter, when we adopt a road, if it's been paid, if it's a brand new road, been paid in the last year, that's money in the taxpayers' pocket, because we know we're not going to have to do anything to that road as far as major, we're not going to have to spend $70,000 a mile on asphalt, and we're going to get paid by the state of Indiana for that, because we adopted it, so it's in our best interest to adopt a new subdivision. Not like we did the last couple of years and adopt one that's been there for 15 years and now needs work, that's costing us money. This would not cost us money. We'd be foolish not to adopt it. I just, it's just my opinion, we don't need to be any more specific than what we are in this last sentence.
Yeah, the specifics need to come before the road is built, when the subdivision is built.
Yep.
That's when the specifics need to be done, and that's what's not been done in the past, so that's why we get ourselves into a pickle. Whenever we do have to adopt some of these subdivisions, that have been around for quite some time, and weren't, been two specifications in the beginning, so that's why we're changing the thing, we're changing the, I think, am I correct?
I agree. But just so that they're that way, they're the way they should be, when we do have to adopt them, or when we do take them over, they're just, if they're built correctly in the beginning, the chances where you have any problems with them are slim to none. Yes, they're just worthy rules.
Right.
You got your questions down, you're going to ask. All right, I'll make a motion to return with me.
You look tired. Always a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.